Okay, and good afternoon everyone. And today we've got these fantastic candidates here who have decided to put their feet to the it's in the ballot fire, but with every election, there's one thing stepping in their way, and that's your vote. Okay, and welcome to today's show where we've got the T, was it Hidibara Nui General Ward Show Part Three. So we're off for a bit of a fun part on how things are going. And I love it how people like to email me literally when I'm going live. Always the fun part. So today we've got a brilliant range of candidates here who have decided to come and make themselves available for today's It's in the Ballot Show. And let's kick off with their one minute opening statements. We'll kick off with Mark.
Hi, I'm Mark Gunning. I'm proud to have called Palmerston North my home for over 40 years. I've found Palmerston North to be a caring and supportive community and an ideal place to raise a family, develop a career, and enjoy the many cultural supporting and educational opportunities available. In my work capacity, I've dealt with council for many years, mainly on property related issues, and have generally found staff to be helpful and positive. I believe as someone who's been in the property industry throughout my career and having been involved in both small and large scale developments, I offer a unique expertise that will help decisions made on future council projects that will not only encourage fiscal responsibility, but also help to ensure buildings are fit for purpose for both now and into the future. Decisions made at council affect people every day. We need to remember this when around the table voting on all sorts of things. Thank you.
Okay, next up Tobias.
Kia ora, my name is Tobias Nash. I was born in Palmerston North and I grew up around the area in the Pohangana Valley. And I came back here after attending Owatapi College and Massey University. I went away for a while and came back in 2017 with my whanau. And we've been here since. I'm a teacher and a student at Massey studying psychology this year, been doing some relief teaching. And I'm running to combat youth violence and to improve community wellbeing. I'm developing a youth liaison network to try and improve public safety and try and reach those hard to reach kids who are falling through the crack and building a drop-in centre, which is going to be my campaign headquarters and a prefigurative action of what I would like to achieve in the future as a way of improving people's mental health and positive positive mental health and wellbeing for the community. Kia ora.
Okay, Rachel.
Sharing it. Kia ora, I'm Rachel Bowen. I'm standing for reelection in the General Ward for Palmerston North City Council. It's cliche to say that it's a privilege to serve, but it has absolutely been that for me for the last 12 years. I've enjoyed my time on council and I feel like I've contributed really effectively. I'm incredibly proud of our city and I'm passionate about continuing as to serve as your city councillor in order to build an equitable, sustainable and compassionate community. Those values are incredibly important to me and it's important that that voice is heard around the council table. My passion for our city and my vision for our future continues to be strong. I'm passionate about creating a vibrant, connected and safe city where families and businesses thrive, creativity is nurtured and celebrated, and communities are supported and strong.
Okay, Katie.
Kia ora, I'm Katie Zabell and I'm standing for reelection because our city and our council are facing a lot of major changes. It's happening really fast and we need to strengthen our foundations so that we can handle what's what's coming for us. We've got water reform, resource management reform, waste management reform, local government reform, and a complete 180 on the Land Transport Act. There's hardly an aspect of council work that is unchanged. So how do we handle all of that all at once while we're still keeping the lights on, while we're still keeping the pools and the sports grounds open, still getting the rubbish collected and still having a good city to live in? I've been on council for three years and in that role, I can see that we need people who can see the big picture, but who can also do deep dives into that detail to make sure that it all fits together in a way that makes sense and so that we don't go broke trying to do everything all at once. So I want to strengthen our bones and I have the energy and enthusiasm to keep going for another three years.
Okay, Brent.
Kia ora, my name's Brent Barrett and I'm standing for reelection for city council. My journey in New Zealand started 25 years ago when I moved here from the US to take a job in agricultural science. Worked very much enjoyed, but also very much started to lead me towards connection with community. And I had a number of roles with the community over years, working particularly around nature conservation and some local leadership roles and some national leadership roles. That got me more and more in touch with council until in 2016, I finally decided to stand for council. And that was primarily with the focus around environmental wellbeing. Since then, my focus has really broadened extensively, including where we're at as a community, as well as continuing to look after the environment. I'm here for a future-ready inclusive city that's affordable for all of us. Please vote Brent Barrett.
Okay, Kane.
Afternoon, my name's Kane Dunlop. I too am a local lad, having grown up and around Palmerston North, though originally from Tarunaki. I had the pleasure of disappearing out of the city for a few years, as you do in exploring University of Wellington before turning, spending 11 years as a secondary school teacher, four of those here in the Manuatu and then seven in Tarunaki. For me, coming back three years ago with my young family reopened my eyes, I suppose, to the great place that Palmerston North is, the opportunities that you have here, the wide array of opportunities you have, both in terms of employment, but also the different types of things you can be involved in. And it's a great place to bring up a bring up a family. All of the community resources that we have here are really important and a great way to attract and keep talent in Palmerston North. For me, I'm standing to make sure those decisions continue to happen. Those things don't happen by accident and we need to make sure we make good decisions to enable those things to continue. Cheers.
Okay, Nelson.
Hi, my name's Nelson Harper. So my background's chemical bioprocess engineering. I studied here at Massey. Since then, I've started a business called Pre-Cycle NZ, where you might have seen me around the square sorting out your recycling at events and digging through the rubbish. But I absolutely love Palmeri, it's a great place. It's where I started my business, it's where I found community and where I've started a family. So I'm also involved in a lot of governance in the community. I run the local branch for the New Zealand Institute for International Affairs, also on the board of Just Silk. My goals are really to strengthen the economy of the city, to support a lot of local innovation. We're an awesome place, full of innovation and startups and technology that could really be massive in the world and we don't highlight that enough. Also really care about the environment. I've spent a lot of time cleaning up streams, sorting through waste. And my background makes me really strong technically at understanding infrastructure. Thank you.
And we've got Mark. Vaughn. Oh, sorry Vaughn, sorry. I'm looking at the wrong end of the sheet. Sorry. Yeah.
Kia ora, good evening. Vaughn Dennison is my name. Councils today face many challenges, rising costs, limited funding and complex water reforms, just to name a few. These demand strong practical leadership and effective collaboration. And I offer a reasoned voice, have a positive approach and I offer over 20 years of positive and proven experience for the city of Palmerston North, representing you, your family and our city's future. Serving our city has always been a privilege. I have been chairing a strategy and finances term and been focusing our investment onto core services, also sport and recreation facilities for our active community. Alongside that, I'm also involved with Softball New Zealand, I'm professionally involved with Homes for People. And I have a vision still that remains very clear that we should be building a safe, connected and forward focused Palmerston North for all generations today and for the future. I'd love it if you'd support Vaughn Dennison, thank you.
Okay, we're off to the fun part of the show. This is where the candidates will pick out box numbers now, just because we don't have Tenekke Kabushi here tonight, so myself is someone too good, if I'm playing that role, has to do everything on their own. So I, so we're going to get the candidates to put box numbers, I'm going to cross them off the sheet and they'll go to my box and pick a card randomly out of the box as well and give the number, exactly the same way as it'll be if it was from the boxes there, just to save me running across the stage backwards and forwards. And it makes it easier next to my string deck, which is one of my fun tools that can sit down there and put question names on there, such as this one here. So let's kick off with now, I've got a random, oh, before I go to the random board sheet, I've got to tell you all about the button cards and the defu cards. So every candidate gets two button cards. So if a, if a person gets a question that they would like to answer that's in there, they can use their button card to do it, limits to two per person, otherwise we could be here all night long. And they also get one defu card. So if they get a question they do not like, they can use the defu card and sit there and pass it on to another candidate. So let's see what the random order sheet brings up to do first. Mark, you get to go up first.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Sorry, I felt I was lost the candidate on the stage. Sorry. Oh, fair enough, fair enough, this happens. Yeah, exactly. Okay, so we've got S for Saera. Palmerston North City Council has some cycle lane, cycleways along its arterial routes throughout the city. Is it a core function for, a core function that Palmerston North City Council should provide or a nice to have?
Yeah, this is probably one issue that is relatively unknown to me. I think as a cyclist, cycle lanes are great, but I think also as an arterial route is important for traffic, the flow of cars is also exceptionally important. I think to date, we probably, the Fezzis Street has proved we haven't got that right. And whilst I'd like to see more cycle lanes, I think that's important that we actually prioritise the fact that traffic flow and cars are important for everyone, both community and business.
We don't want you walking in front of the camera while speaking. Yeah, so jump back into your seat.
Sam, can you hear me?
Who, mate?
You have that Laura? Sam, I don't have, I don't have Mark's last name.
Yes, because there's two of them in there. Yeah, Gunning. Oh, thanks, thanks for that. Yep. Okay, and now I'm trying to go, so we've got, next to Katie is Brent. Yep, with a button.
Yeah, great question around how we develop transport network and what the future of that looks like. My priority is making sure that we have a transport network that works for everyone, whether they're in a car, on a bike, in a bus or walking. It's essential that everyone has the freedom and the choice to get around the city how they would like to. The Fezzis Street project has been come up, as just mentioned by Mark. It's an objective that we set out in that project to ensure that that part of the transport network was markedly safer than it was. Historically, it's been a very dangerous and unsafe intersections and the crash stats bear that out quite strongly. It's also a school zone with over 2,000 students a day coming in. So the report that we've had back since project implementation is that yes, there has been some increase in congestion at peak time, but the safety performance of that street is improved by 80% and the economic performance is above average. So I'd say that's not a perfect project, but a good success and a good path forward.
And if you have less crashes near your, near your intersections, your insurance premiums go down. It's something I've, I've learnt in Wellington. Postcodes and suburbs play around with your insurance premium. So if you have a lot of crashes in the area, your insurance premiums go up whether you are involved or not. Rachel.
Hello. Eight, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we've got Z for Zulu. What, what's one big opportunity or challenge you see for the city?
Well, I think this is covered in Katie's introduction particularly, is that we are not lacking in challenges. Local government as a whole is under the pump. But if I bring that down to a local level, I see a particular challenge for central city and in particular within that, earthquake prone heritage buildings and our community facilities. I'm thinking particularly of our library and museum buildings, which are currently earthquake prone according to the government legislation. And we're going to have to do something about that if we want to maintain access to those facilities. So it's a project I've been involved with almost for as long as I've been on council, we've been talking about this. It's going to need some careful and creative thinking about how we organise funding for that project, but it's something I'm completely passionate about and something I know our community hugely values is access to those facilities. So that's a challenge and an opportunity for our city, I think.
And we've got a button from Nelson.
So I think Palmeri has a huge opportunity to be the innovation hub of New Zealand. So we have the most PhDs and scientists by capita. We have a lot of research institutes and tertiary institutes and we have a lot of innovation. So we have some world leading technologies here. We have businesses with global shares, global market shares. It's all here in Palmeri. So I think if we can help promote those businesses and boost them and boost the whole economy, that creates more jobs, puts people into the empty shops and fills that up, means that there's people here, there's more to do because of that and it just makes a greater city all around. So I think there's a huge opportunity to lead into that. And it's something that I have been involved with a lot recently, bringing a lot of like the likes of export New Zealand up to Palmerston North to really highlight how we are as a, as a city. And it's something that this year we had the first Lower North Island Export Awards here in Palmerston North instead of Wellington.
Okay, next box number Kane.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. It's a number close to my heart, the birthday. Okay, we've got AA. Do you support household food waste collection to stop organic waste going to the landfill?
In the broader sense I do, but there's a big economic argument around that and we've seen that play out in Auckland in terms of the cost benefit of having that completed, the trucking of that down to the plants and reperar and how that all works out for the community. So I think there has to be a real balance that's in there. There's a second part to that as well around homes and how easy it is for people to be able to do a lot of that sort of composting themselves at home and whether there's an in-between space there. That works out better for both the council and the cost burden they might have to take on if they were to implement a street by street or a letterbox by letterbox organic waste collection. I've come from New Plymouth where they had that, it was well taken up, but it also created a lot of issues as well. The green boxes that went flying, the smell that comes with it. I think there's a lot of things that need to be worked through before we can, before we can get to that level of implementation in Palmerston North.
And we have another button from Nelson. Sorry, you used up, after this, you'll be using up all your buttons.
These are the good questions for me. I love this. Good timing. So this is an area that I do a lot of work in through my business. So over the last month, I've actually been in three different cities and districts, hand sorting through the waste to understand what's in there from households and businesses. And we do find about 30% of this is food waste, which is a massive, massive issue for the environment and for other reasons as well. So we have also done trials and auditing the process of the curbside collections and there is only about maybe a third of households actually use it. So I think it should be a thing that people can opt into because not everyone has the luxury of a compost bin at home. But also a big area that's completely missed is the commercial waste space. So we've done a lot of work with businesses, with events, and there's a huge amount of food waste. And some of them do take the option of taking a food scrap bin, but I think this is an area that could be really good. And Manuatu is looking to put in a food anaerobic digestion there so we could collaborate with them on that.
Okay, Vaughn, what box number?
Box number one.
Box number one. Okay, we've got N for November. What will you do to stop poor council expenditure, allocate resources to critical infrastructure and rein in huge increases?
Yep, I guess to stop, I don't know if it's poor council expenditure, I'd rephrase it into optional, but we have some, all projects come through the community and actually meet a threshold of getting to the council table. And so they're fairly well supported and to be in our 10-year plan, they actually do get support. So it's around prioritisation. And many of those projects are multi-million dollar capital investments around community centres. And where I think councils probably got the ambition too high is that we're trying to do too many of those in the front end of our long-term plan. And I take a more pragmatic approach, I have a fairly conservative view. And this is also reflected through the adverse audit, external audit opinion, that we have got too much expenditure committed in our planning without knowing where the third-party contribution comes to. So we've taken a stance that we won't press go on that till we get the third-party contribution and grants towards those projects. And I think that's a fair approach to take. Thank you.
Okay, Nelson, what box number?
Twelve.
Twelve. Okay, we've got O for Oscar. Oh, I think you'll really like this one. Issues around climate change are becoming more important. What are your thoughts on supporting anaerobic digestive, anaerobic, yeah, digestion of food waste to produce biogas similar to the plant of reperar? Please note, this is not an incineration of general waste.
So yeah, this is a perfect question for me. So we do actually have an anaerobic digester here in Palmerston North that's been set up in the wastewater treatment plant for quite a long time. It's not the most efficient, but it has taken some different wastes into it. So what they're doing and fielding is they're trying to get a critical mass of food waste so that they can try to get a plant there. So to me, it doesn't quite make sense that we would also try to compete against that and to create our own anaerobic digestion system for food scraps. I'd say the best case scenario would be working with fielding, with Palmerston North and with even the likes of Horofenewa, who we also take their recycling through our facilities to create something that has a bigger scale of economy, bigger efficiency, and then making sure that there's a really good end use for that biogas. So making sure there's an industrial, somebody who can purchase that or it can go towards things like heating de Lido or other, you know, core needs for heat.
Okay, Katie.
Number 11.
Number 11, okay. Okay, question A. What political parties are you linked to?
I'm endorsed by the Green Party. Short and sweet.
Okay, Tobias, what box number?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Okay, we've got E for Echo. Do you think the council should be involved in providing social housing? And if so, how?
Yeah, I think council definitely should do that. The Palmerston City Council has actually been providing some housing. You can see some of the relatively new ones built over by Papayoe Park. And I think it makes a huge difference because that's one of the biggest issues that a lot of people here are facing. And, you know, it can be difficult to justify expenditure when you're at council, everybody wants to complain about rates. But people have to think that if you're going to improve the social conditions in the city, that's going to decrease costs in a lot of way, you know, in a lot of different ways. Because homelessness, it presents a lot of costs to the city and to the health system. And so if you make an investment upfront, that can really help improve the situation in the city for a bunch of people and it can be less costly down the track. So I wouldn't want to, you know, use debt to fund operational expenditure, but you can use debt financing to, to fund social housing. And that might actually turn out to be, you know, positive in the long run. Also, obviously there's rental income that can come from it, that should be able to cover the costs. So I think it's doable, but you know, you just have to look at the, the land use and what's the right site for it.
And we have a button for Mark.
Well said Tobias and I agree totally. I think Palmerston North has about 400 social houses at the moment, which is, which is pretty good. A lot of councils haven't got the same. I think when we talk about the housing of people, it is so important, but we need to look at new models to be considered. There's rate payers money or debt accrual that is currently being used. I understand there are ways to change our housing stock ownership that will attract central government subsidies. This is something we need to consider seriously and it would allow for more housing with potentially less reliance on rate pass subsidy to stay afloat by use of. And the one other thing I do find really important about it is, and we didn't do it that well in Papa Papayoi, is the use of local personnel for the build, for the consultancy, for every part of it, not Aucklanders.
Okay, now back to, oh, Brent. Twenty-five, let's do twenty-five. Okay. U for uniform. Okay, what should council's priorities be when making grants to the community?
Council needs to really stay focused on where there's greatest need in the community and make sure that we are responsive to that. We consistently see with our community grants that there is requests far over and above what is available. And we know that those needs particularly sit with a number of marginalised communities, sit around protection for the environment, sit around ensuring that everyone has the opportunity when they choose to live in Palmerston North that they will be able to live a life of dignity. And so the priority around those community grants needs to be around what's best for the people of the city and what's best for the natural environment. We have a proud track record in council of investing strongly towards community through community grants, through a number of different mechanisms. They deliver incredible value as a multiplier because those go to organisations that throw in the volunteer effort, that have the relationships, that deliver the results that are so important for our community.
Okay, we've had eight questions down. Let's get on to another eight. Katie.
Do we do number six?
Yeah, I can do your number six. Okay, Watson, what, what card's going to come up for number six? We've got J for Juliet. Spending needs to happen within budget without increasing rates. What services or luxuries would you stop?
That's such a great question because so much of what's driving our costs up are mandates from the government that we've had no choice. And a really good example has been our water infrastructure where water standards were implemented. One day our water was completely compliant, had no issues. The next day they came into effect and we were non-compliant and we were required to take on a $20 million program to install UV filters at boards to make us compliant. And there was nothing wrong with our water at all. So when we're balancing that, it becomes a really tricky issue in terms of how do we keep those costs from escalating when our own costs are escalating as well? Some of the things that we've done to keep our costs down, like putting solar panels on our really high emitting buildings to reduce what our electricity expenditure has been, has been helpful. And but mainly just keeping the focus on things like our footpath, things that are going to make an impact on people's daily lives and then balancing that out so that they don't continue to get worse.
Okay, Tobias, what box number? Twenty-four. Okay, we've got R for Romeo. Palmerston North City Council has many places where tactical tiles are in use on the footpath to assist users who are vision impaired to know where it's safe to cross the road and what type of crossing they're using. Is this a core function that Palmerston North City Council should provide or a nice to have?
I'd say that's a core function. I think that we need to make sure that the city is accessible. When I announced my candidacy, there was a friend of mine who got in touch, who said she really wanted to know about my approach to issues like mainstream first and other, you know, central principles for the Enabling Good Lives Protocol, which is a, you know, a way of making sure that disabled people have access and agency and, you know, self direction. So I think it's really important that we make sure that our city is accessible to everybody and including people who are vision impaired and, you know, people who experience other disabilities. So yeah, it's definitely, it's definitely an essential rather than a, than a nice to have.
And we have a button from Rachel.
I absolutely agree with what Tobias has said about this particular question. My button was about the, the part of it which talked about core services versus nice to have. And that's something that's thrown about all the time when it comes to local government. And this particular central government has weaponised those phrases. I'd just say that if you had 100 people in the room or even a representative sample as we have here today, those people in the room would not agree on what might be core and what might be nice to have. And that's part of the role of local government and it's been covered by other candidates already, is that we put a proposal out to our community for the things that we're planning to fund and they come back and tell us how valuable they think those are. So it's not that council determines what's core and what's nice to have, it's that that's a conversation we have with our community. Obviously, some things are fundamental, you know, water, pipes, footpaths, absolutely, they're fundamental. But core and nice to have is not a helpful distinction in the conversations we have as local government.
Okay, Nelson, what box number?
Have we done number two yet?
Yeah, we can do number two. Go. Okay, we've got X for X-ray. Would you consider advocating for more safe pedestrian crossings on our main arterial routes such as Pioneer Highway?
Tricky question that I hadn't thought too much about, to be honest. Um, I think there, there are a few pedestrian crossings on that street and I think pedestrian safety is important. I think if it was to be put in place, it would need to be planned very well to make sure that it didn't compromise the traffic. Um, because that's obviously a big concern for the city. Palmie's a place that I love to be because you can drive around Palmie really quickly and get places easily. Um, so I wouldn't want to see that compromised. Um, but I think safety is also a concern. So I think it's something that would need to be looked at a lot deeper. You'd need to actually survey people in the region and see, you know, get some feedback on it, not just jump into a decision.
And we've got a button from Katie.
Yes, I did want to butt in on that um because I, I do support this because we've got a number of arterial routes which also have schools on them. And I do have school aged children, so I am dropping off and picking up on streets like College Street, Albert Street all the time and seeing the um flow and scattering of school children, trying to navigate those road crossings at those times. They have seen the difference that things like raised crossings have made at slowing those traffic, slowing that traffic down, not just at peak times, but times when there maybe isn't a whole bunch of traffic and cars feel that they can go um at speed in those areas when there are still vulnerable users around. That being said, um the change in direction from the government has reduced our ability to fund that kind of work. And then our, our annual budget and long term plan have followed suit. So there's very little in the budget for things like traffic calming measures um to actually, to make that happen, which I think is a great shame.
And from what I remember, you could, you, you could get funding to get rid of them, from what I gather, which I do, which I thought sounded very ideological. And maybe Simeon Brown wants a six lane uh monstrosity put in the middle of Palmerston North. As we see, we, we always joke about in Wellington, we want them to sit there and do that. At least our six lane monstrosity known as Geovis Key actually has some safe places to cross. Yeah. Okay, Vaughn, what box number?
Three.
Three. So it's always a lot of fun trying to get the cards out and making sure that I'm making it random. We got Q for Cubic. What budget line item would you remove to help bring rates down in Palmerston North without disrupting basic services?
Well, I'm not going to take the watch budget line I take out. We've got three options when we come to budget decisions and one is to delete a program. One is to decrease the amount of money allocated to that program and one is to defer the program. And I think they're mechanisms that are much more helpful rather than just purely deleting a line item. As I mentioned before, a lot of those programs have actually had merit with community support to actually make their way to the council table in the first place. And if there was pressure on rates, what we tend to do is actually start decreasing the budget or deferring it out a year or two. And so that's just a practical financial necessity um when we come into the deliberations with rates. So I would say, say that there's no one silver bullet and I'm not going to pick out any um program to hang. I think they're all worthy programs and it's just a matter of priority and funding um mechanisms to, to work through to try and keep them included as much as we can. Thank you.
And we've got a button from Katie.
I am, I am going to butt in again because I, I do have a view and have expressed that um apart from removing a specific budget item, sometimes we add in additional budget items that are outside of what we have contestable funding for. So we have through our processes, a set contestable fund that we want to give in sponsorships and in grants and things like that that we all agree to and vote on. And um that goes through as its own budget line item and gets reported on. And then every now and then we get requests come to us that fit outside of that. And these become, if they are successful, they become their own budget line items that aren't contestable, that haven't gone through the same process that uh that other, uh they haven't had, they've had an additional opportunity that other groups haven't had and they don't get reported on uh or assessed against those other funding opportunities. I think if we have the kind of policies where we've agreed on a set budget, we should stick to those policies and not just add in extra items when they come along because they sound good.
And here's a cheeky question for the audience. Who would like to remove either the rent or the mortgage as a budget line item in their weekly budget? Because I, yeah. Okay, we've got, uh, was it Kane? What box number?
Uh, is it Lucky 13 still there?
Uh, yes, it is. Okay, we got B for Bravo. Do you support political party endorsements of local government candidates?
Uh, personally, no, I don't. Um, and the main reason behind that is I think a lot of national politics is, is sort of been discussed here already. Uh, can filter down and taint local body politics without great need to. Um, a lot of council councillors are standing for the betterment of the city. And I think we can all agree that all of them that have, that have been on the council in the past have all done that. Um, but I don't think there's a need to, to have political party endorsements come down to this level. I think candidates should be able to, to stand and promote Palmerston North and, and do what's best for Palmerston North without having to be worried about how that flows up to uh the, the higher ups in the, in the political party system that they may, may be a part of. Um, it has the potential uh to take decisions, but more importantly, I think it has perception to take decisions and, and perception is reality and how people, people view things are more important than necessarily what the outcomes are. And when you have those political affiliations, it has a perception of being tainted and that's not great for, for local body politics.
Okay, and a button from Rachel.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I could not disagree more, actually. And I'm standing as somebody who has always stood as an independent. This year I didn't put my affiliation on the form because independent has become incredibly meaningless in this system. So I really appreciate uh um candidates who stand and call out their party affiliation. Um, we have Greens, we have Labour, we have Te Parti Mari and we have an ACT candidate. And I think that is really useful for the voting public because it tells you something about the values that they're bringing to the table. It's shorthand, it's useful information. And then there are some people who are active and supported members of political parties that don't declare that, but call themselves independent and that's an absolute nonsense. It's a lie. They're not independent at all. And then you have candidates who actually are independent but are tied by their own brush of ones who are. And I think my council colleague, council biologist called it pretend-dependent. So people are pretending to be independent but actually aren't. So I think it's actually great if people are willing to make more luckless to the mast and tell people about the party that they're a member of. That should be encouraged, as should transparency in the voting system.
And you're completely right, considering in Wellington, they have a group called Independent Together.
Yes, so not independent at all.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And yeah, it's quite interesting when they say you're independent together, but you think about the same thing. I actually know the person who's a Meryl candidate personally. But yes, ju- we'll just leave it at that. Okay, Mark. Uh, sorry, it's taken, but you can go one up or one down. Well, let's go one up to 23. Okay, we've got C for Charlie. Should rural communities have a say in the operation of council-owned rural schemes?
Yeah, this is a topic I haven't really done a lot of research on. I think um obviously community input is important on most decisions and I don't doubt this in this case as well. But at the end of the day, I'd imagine there would be times where there would be an obvious clash between rural expectation and perhaps prag- pragmatism from a council point of view. And I think that uh you need to listen to the community, but at the end of the day, decisions do lie with the council and probably predominant to rate payers are within the city boundaries at a guess.
Okay, Rachel, what box number?
Sorry, I was just looking for my drink. Um, number four?
Let's, yeah, we can go for number four.
Thank you.
Ah, we got D for Delta. What is your view on residential, commercial and industrial growth in the city?
I'm in favour of growth if we're managing it sustainably and have regard, particularly, you think about where Palmerston North is. We're in the middle of a rural hinterland here, so we've got a lot of high class soils around us. So I'm generally not in favour of an urban creep out into our high class soils. And I think it's certainly cheaper, more affordable if we can constrain our development into what, where our infrastructure already is. So that's largely about residential growth for the city. Yes, growth is good if it's well planned and comes where we want it. Um, in terms of commercial growth, we have determined where we want commercial growth to be. And that's a process that we go through with our community. It's quite difficult where we're looking for new growth. That has been challenging, but if we want to grow as a city, we have to find places where all of the kinds of growth have to happen.
And Brent.
Is number nine available?
Uh, yes, number nine is available. Okay, we got W for Whisky. What? No. Why do you think you're right for the role as councillor?
Thank you for the question. Uh, it's certainly one that I asked myself a lot in 2016 before I even stood. Uh, my background, as I said, was in science, which was quite a ways away from politics. In fact, I knew that scientists were one of the most trusted professions in the world and politicians unfortunately less so. So I did spend a lot of time asking myself. I think principally what I've been able to show through my track record over three terms on council is that I'm an active and involved uh member of the community, I'm responsive, I'm prepared to get in there and help the community advocate when it's community level change that needs to happen. I'm prepared to stand up and make sure that things that need addressed get addressed. A great example of that's been the road toll proposal that the national government um put on Ashurst and um Tarawua. I was proud to lead out the notice of motion that ended up with a unanimous support from city council opposing the tolling of that road and we won.
And I'm certainly glad I didn't pay the $4.50 each way over Saturday and Sunday to go over that hill. In addition to, I'll probably say at least $4.30 worth of petrol each way going up it. Okay, so we got, uh, we've got another eight questions done. Let's go for another eight. Kane, you get to go up first. What box number?
Uh, 26.
Uh, yep, we can go for 26. You're all good at keeping track of your numbers. Okay, we got P for Papa. What, do you support the fitting of solar panels to council buildings to offset daytime electricity use?
Uh, I actually went to a, something more based on residential uh solar panel use uh about a month or so ago. And it's pretty clear now that the, the economics around solar panels and their installation cost versus the return that you get on those has flipped quite considerably in the last few years. Uh, the, the capital cost upfront to put them on has started to drop. And as we've seen, unfortunately, in all of our power bills over the last 12 to 18 months, that's only going in one direction. So when you look at a long-term investment for a council, I think it's, it's silly not to take those um types of things into account. The council itself has got some massive roof space in some pretty unobstructed parts of the city as well. So the performance is obviously going to be pretty high. So at a core, I think there's some real opportunity there. As with all of it, as we've talked about, capital cost upfront, putting in all of those infrastructure, there's a cost that comes to it and we have to prioritise around it. Um, but there's certainly opportunity there.
Okay, Nelson.
Uh, 21.
21. Okay, we got M for Mike. Cause uh was it concerning that central government's messaging about councils being a core reason for the cost of living crisis due to wasteful spending? Do you think this is the case? Why or why not?
I would say probably not. Um, I mean, uh, I think the, the cost of living has a lot of international and national levers that are, and influences there. Um, so a lot of the things we buy, we import it to New Zealand. We've got cost of labour, obviously, if it's made in New Zealand. Uh, but I think international um relations is really important and that and really understanding how that plays into our local space. Um, and even nationally, I think there's a lot more um that kind of influences uh rather than local, local government um in saying that rates um and rent is obviously a thing that keeps rising for people that is really important. Um, and I think that the way that council spends money should be um done really critically and making sure that it's, it's spent on things that actually benefit everybody rather than specific groups of people.
And now we've got a button from Vaughn.
Yeah, I think it's uh not fair for uh that uh to be said that central government's saying that the cost of living crisis is because of councils. That's simply not true. The compounding inflationary impact since Covid has gone through the roof into the high twenties. And marry that up against what the um increases have been to wages, is it like about 12%? Um, it's just, that's where the gaps exist. And so that has an impact on housing and of course those that are renting. That the price to rent and price to buy housing costs a lot. Distribution of produce at the supermarket and the, the commis- commission are meant to keep some um eye on that stuff, but it's gone through the roof. And um the insurance has gone up through the roof and that's because impacts like the Christchurch quake since Cyclone Gabriel. And that's out of anybody's control. Um, and so when you're coming down, we talked about power earlier, the power rates going up 20% I think probably since that period. And, and so you've got all these other impacts and our local government, sure, I mentioned that we have an adverse effect to our budget. Um, and we've got some costs that I think probably are too bloated in the front end of our budget. Ultimately, it's, we're not the big player in this. We're, we're a player, but there's many impacts. Thank you.
Okay, and we've got Tobias with a button.
Yeah, um, they say, some economists say anyway, that the best cure for high prices is high prices. And the price of everything has been going up for a long time. You know, not just recently, I think it's kind of, things are almost running their course in terms of, you know, the neoliberal economic project that's been running things since the, the mid 1980s. And I think it's really getting to a breaking point. Things, the centre cannot hold, this entire thing is about to collapse, so far as I can tell. And it's what, you know, a lot of people refer into as the poly crisis. So to blame it on local government is, is ridiculous to think that. And so there's not a whole lot that local government can really do to, to solve this crisis. I think there are a lot of interesting options. I've been trying to think, you know, run numbers and stuff and think about what could a local government do in terms of, say, for instance, instead of um, you know, granting people money and just spending money, you could maybe uh do some lending or through a council-controlled organisation. There's all kinds of different options and interesting things, but you're still kind of between a rock and a hard place. So that's also why I decided to run was, you know, I figure you've got to get involved because things are going in a bad direction. So it's time to take action.
Yeah, and we have another button from Brent.
Yeah, thanks. Um, obviously an interesting topic with four of us on it now. So um totally refute the premise of the question, right? So of every dollar of tax in this country, 90 cents goes to central government, only 10 cents sits here. So if it was a tax issue, let's talk about central government, the 90 cents that they take out of every single dollar of tax. Actually, the point that I mostly wanted to make was that rates and council investment can contribute incredibly to affordability at the city level. I'll give you the example of the new gym at Haer Katahi Bridge. Everyone in this city paid about $3 to get that installed. What that means is that anyone in the community, anytime, any day, can go and get access to gym equipment. Compare that to hundreds of dollars a year for a gym membership versus $3 as a one-off and you get access to exercise equipment. Now, yeah, we don't have hot showers down there, but in terms of actually meeting affordability and enabling people to live the lives that they might want to live in the city, council investment can do this. Other examples around water, it's getting far more expensive when central government takes it over. Library is a great way to meet costs in the community.
It's a very, very example to put out there and one that I've heard from the cousins up in Manawa Two District Council. The price of building new bridges have gone up 34% in the last two years. So that's something, you know, costs, you know, buil- and I think they had a bridge washout a while back as well. I can't remember when it happened. Yeah. Okay, uh Brent, what box number?
Oh, this is becoming a memory challenge. Um, is number four still available?
Uh, no, but we can do five.
Sure.
I mean, you, you, you've, a, a useful preference number, potentially? Okay, we've got, uh, was it letter F for Foxtrot? There has been much media coverage about candidates' behaviour to the, towards their fellow candidates over the country. What are your personal values that make you a suitable candidate to be a councillor?
Uh, thank you. I'm feeling just, you know, slightly targeted at this point because I've had two questions at random about whether or not I'm a good candidate, but happy to answer. Look, um, I, I think for me, a, a driving force in my life is empathy. And that's something that is incredibly important when you are making decisions on behalf of a community with community consultation. Wanting to make sure that you're arriving at the solutions that work best for everyone is that you can um feel and, and have an aspect of empathy towards everyone in the community regardless um of where they're coming from and, and what they might be um bringing to. I also am strong around um evidence-based decision-making and integrity. Those are really um core values for me and things that I try to bring to every single conversation, every single decision. Um, I'm really committed to. Um, I'm really committed to hearing from community and try to do as much listening as I can before actually arriving um, at a decision. So I think those are a few of my personal attributes and values that um, do lend themselves well uh, to continuing on council.
Okay, next up, Katie.
Have we had 18?
No, we haven't.
Oh, I'll take 18 please.
Yes, the great age of when we all get to vote. Okay. Uh, AB, what's your biggest priority for the next term and how do you tend on delivering that?
Oh, that's such a good question. I am, what keeps me up at night is the amount of change, as I talked about in my opening statements and how much change is coming for local government in almost every aspect of what we do. So it is quite difficult to think about something particular I might want to work on or might want to achieve in the next three years when a lot of those foundations are going to change. Even the assumptions that we've made in our long-term plan just a year ago, um, you know, a lot of those have been completely superseded and blown out of the water. So I think for me, it's um, it's to keep on the ground and keep listening to people and to keep building trust with the community and the residents that I talk with so that they can trust that whatever change that we're facing, I am representing what they want to hear at the table. And what they really want to hear is some pushback against some of this. And pushback might not necessarily be effective, but it's important that we do it. So that's what I'd most like to focus on is navigating the change with the authentic voice of what our community is telling us.
Okay, and the button from Tobias.
So the biggest priority that I want to work on for the next term, is um, the youth finance thing that I talked about in my opening statement. Because when I did some polling when I was considering running, that was a top thing that people said they were concerned about in the city, which I found surprising. You know, I asked, what are the biggest things that you're, you're worried about? Like crime and safety, the environment, business and jobs. And crime and safety was a top one. So I said, what kind? And they said, youth crime and intimidation. So I thought, oh, that's a, I was, I was surprised by it, but I thought, okay, well, what can we do to improve that? And then a lot of people have a punitive approach, but what I really want to try and do is build those networks, find those hard-to-reach kids and then connect with them and connect them with those organisations who are best placed to help them. So rather than, you know, at the moment, I'm trying to do what I can by myself and um, getting a bunch of kids around to train in the garage and do weights and stuff. But in the future, what I want to do for the, for that um, issue with the council is try and connect services to people as much as possible and bring that in and try and take a, like a wraparound services approach and make sure that those, those kids who are out there getting in trouble, the ones who are most at risk are the ones that we can reach.
And Tobias, you got the microphone back again? Perfect. Okay. I for India. Do you support implementing safer speed limits around our schools within the Palmerston North City territorial limits?
Just different from the question that we saw on the screen. I want to ask that one.
What's on the screen?
Do you think that Mahdi wards should have their own tip? Pual, Mahdi wards, strength and democracy, why or why not? I absolutely think that those strengthen democracy. A lot of people say, oh, that's race-based representation, which I think is a nonsense. Um, you know, being Mahdi or Pakia is not about race. It's the fact that we have two legal systems in this country. We have Tikanga, Tikanga Mahdi, and then we have, you know, the Pakia system of law based on the crown and stuff. So I think the Treaty of Waitangi, the Treaty of Waitangi, it's very clear about that, about what that means, which is that we're going to preserve, you know, the Taonga and the Tinoranga Tiritanga of the indigenous people. So I don't think that it's racist or that it's a violation of, you know, our Magna Carta, our, our um, you know, uh, system of, of a one man, one vote. It's simply an alternative legal system which exists. And also I think a lot of people underestimate the benefit that can come from it. Like say for instance, it's two degrees as best in the treaty claim that has broken up the duopoly of the two main phone companies and, and reduced prices for everyone. So it could be good for everyone, not just Mahdi.
Okay. Uh, Vaughan, what box number?
Uh, have we got 15 available?
No, but we've got one up and one down from that.
Okay, I'll go one down 14, thanks.
Okay, we got K for Kilo. How do you plan to use deliberative democracy to ensure residents can contribute directly to the challenges our community faces?
Thank you for the question. Well, we, we have processes in place already and I'm committed to the consultation and the um, engagement that we have with our community. There was a few years back that we actually had a van that we went out to events um, into the community and actually made ourselves available with different short surveys and um, just having an ear for concern um, in the, in the community environment. And even though we've stopped doing that as a formal um, mode of engagement, I'm active in the community and I have an open listening ear and, and I think residents will feel free to give you exactly what they're thinking. Um, and so that gives you a barometer when you come to the council table and you're going through and debating those type of issues. I'll tell you one example about um, democratic right to have a voice. Um, this Wednesday at the council table, we're having one around the Linklater Reserve around, should we have a dog only um, on leash and off-leash area and put some fencing around that? That's had over, how many submissions? Like we've had over 500, right? Yeah, we've, we've had a ton and we're going to have a, almost a whole day blocked out on listening people's views um, on an issue like that. So I think we're very open to the community voice. Um, and that's just one example of how we've opened up the doors and, and given time to hear views. Thank you.
That certainly sounds a lot, a lot, much more funner to listen to than some of the stuff that's going through parliament at times. Yeah. Uh, Rachel, what box number?
Have we got 11?
No, but we can do 10 or 16.
Oh, uh, 10, thank you.
Sorry, that one's already been on the screen.
Might be a good one.
So Alan, I have been mixed up somewhere in the system, but that's all good. We've got Y for Yankee. Auckland Council has recently shifted to taking away recycling bins of people who mix in general race with their recycling. Palmerston North City Council consider removing recycling bins for doing the same thing.
Well, we already do. Um, so all of our recycling bins in the city have ARFID chips in them. So we know whose recycling is what. Um, and then if there's a problem with somebody's recycling, we operate on a kind of three-strikes rule. So if this, if you're getting it wrong, somebody will come and do some education with you to help you understand what should be in your recycling and what shouldn't. Um, and then we'll give you another go and then we might do some more education. And if you can't be educated, then your bin might go. But in general, people do the right thing if they know what the right thing is. The challenge for council is making the right thing the easy thing, and that's what we're trying to do. It's important that people can recycle and we divert as much waste from rubbish as possible. So it's important that we put resources into educating our community about the best way to deal with the rubbish and recycling.
Okay, uh, well, we've uh, gone through 24 questions. So we're going to take a break. But before we take a break, let's get to some general housekeeping as what we normally do with its in the ballot. It's in the ballot productions. It's an independent uh, non-profit organisation that main focus is spreading democracy and letting candidates and voters be informed on who's standing where. And we are run on a, was it small dollar donations to help pay for the costs of running these shows? Today's venue cost hire has cost us $120 to hire. We've also paid an extra four, uh, was it paid $14 uh, to, for Stalin for the, was it to broadcast our show on the internet? We're also paying Restream $51 for the, uh, was it Restream account? So we can broadcast a show to the multiple, multiple platforms we go to. And today, thank goodness, we only got one vehicle, not two, but we have travel uh, fuel budget of $100 and we have a $50 refreshment budget. So any small donation goes and helps a long way. Uh, I can certainly tell you right now, uh, next Monday, Huts City Council wants $1,000 for us to hire the little feta, 500 if that's a bond. So just for, just for something to point out there. So yes, that's a, a lot of fun trying to make cash flow work and that's the email I've received. Please pay up or we're cancelling your booking, but we can't cancel the booking for democracy. So we'll take a 10-minute break and we'll see you afterwards for hard-hitting questions.
Wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working keeping that head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Here you go. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Maybe three. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Maybe three. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Maybe three. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs, you don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working keeping that head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Here you go. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Maybe three. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Maybe three. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Maybe three. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime.
Oh shit, don't panic, bud. It's almost time to get back to the show. The candidates have stretched their legs, been partying, taking a break. If there's still hard hitting questions, closing statements and stuff you want to know. So grab those snacks, here are answers and prep for decisions you need to make. Oh, 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 oh. The candidates have stretched their legs. The candidates have stretched their legs, been partying, taking a break. Oh, 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 oh. There's still hard hitting questions, closing statements and stuff you want to know. So grab the snack you want to know. So grab those snacks, here are answers and prep for decisions you need to make. Oh, 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 oh. The balance here, the moment's near. Your voice is loud, it's crystal clear. Kiwi dreams and hopes collide. Truth, the one so stern with pride. It's in the ballot where we belong. Every vote builds a nation strong. Your council, your board, your mayor in line. Together we shake this land divine. The future's written in your hand. A chance to guide and take a stand. Community, rising hearts aligned. In death row, we shake this land divine. It's in the ballot we belong. Every vote builds-
We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs, you don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working keeping that head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Here you go. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Maybe three. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean-
The balance here, the moment's near. Your voice is loud, it's crystal clear. Kiwi dreams and hopes collide. Truth, the one so stern with pride. It's in the ballot where we belong. Every vote builds a nation strong. Your council, your board, your mayor in line. Together we shake this land divine. The future's written in your hand. A chance to guide and take a stand. Community, rising hearts aligned. In death row, we shake this land divine. It's in the ballot we belong. Every vote builds a-
Okay. Yeah, yeah, bunch up, yep.
Oh, oh, yeah, well, listen.
Okay, welcome back to It's in the Ballot. Now let's get ready for hard hitting questions.
Allergic.
Okay, so hard hitting questions, other questions we found important. Now, just to give a bit of advisory, both Nelson and Tobias has had to go because they had pre-existing commitments, but we're glad that they spent the first hour here answering your questions. So, hard hitting question number one. Do you think the council is doing enough in the terms of wastewater treatment and disposal? And just a moment while I get a new random must-up. Rachel, you get to go first.
Oh, thank you. I'd be hard pushed to think of us doing any more in the terms of wastewater, what was the question, wastewater treatment and disposal. We've got a really good track record in our council. We meet all of the standards. We dispose our wastewater safely and according to the terms of our consent. I don't think we could be doing any more. I wish the government would be doing a bit more in terms of chipping in to the huge cost they're putting on our council for how we look at wastewater treatment and disposal. Obviously, we've got a long road to go there with the new wastewater treatment plant that we're looking at, which is largely driven by the need to meet increasing standards as well as our community's interest in taking our wastewater out of the river, out of our. So, we can always be doing more if you put it in those terms, but are we doing enough? Absolutely.
Okay, Brent.
Yeah, my view would be that council could and should be doing more. Concur with what Rachel said about council doing well in the current context. But some of the things that are coming at us, one is the new water standards. Those are going to be a significant driver of change in terms of how we implement the Nature Calls project. That's a steering group that I've been on since its inception in 2017. We're now in our third term of council working through the options, the costs, and how we actually approach that, ensuring that we're working in partnership with EWE and in consultation with the community. So my concern's really around it is that it has taken so long and each year that we take is another increment of cost that comes into that project. And we need to just keep pressing forward. So I would like to see council pushing to ensure that we land nature calls before the regional entity takes over water services.
Okay, Mark.
Yeah, look, obviously, I have been sitting around the table like Rachel and Brent, and I do agree with them totally that from what I hear and see that the city council has been very proactive in this area. I think the central government, you can't say the same about them. I think that's just, you know, it's politics at its worst, probably to be fair. I think we do have a good quality wastewater plant and much work has been-
Don't shut it too tight, otherwise it cuts off the internet. As long as the cords are not damaged.
Sorry, we're just worried about losing our internet here.
Yeah, cords not damaged? Ah, sweet, perfect.
Keep going, keep going.
Restart the clock.
Okay, now I've found out we haven't lost our internet, which was probably a good thing for you when I was talking, but never mind. Look, I think that we have got a good quality wastewater plant and much work has been completed around the Nature Call project. I take my hat up to the council, I think they've done well. I do also agree with Brent. I think there has been a real issue about time taken and time taken reflects on cost. And unfortunately, over the last few years, that time taken has exploded in cost. And I think the one thing that we do need to be wary of is use of consultants in a lot of these things. Sometimes we let them run riot with designing stuff that may be in an old term Rolls Royce, where in fact the Volkswagen design will be totally adequate. And that's, you know, if we talk about cost, that's the one thing we have to really keep under control to ensure that what is achieved at the end is something that's doable and acceptable in whatever huge dollar value that is to rate payers.
Okay, Kane.
Yeah, very much the same sort of opinion, to be fair. It's a yes and a no. It's a yes, the council has done well in managing it and looking after it up until this point. It's a no because there's a whole lot of standards that are coming down that are going to change the game. Some of those are going to continue to evolve over the next nine, 10, 15 years as well. So you're always going to be paying catch up and having to do more. But as Mark's pointed out, it's a case of what is needed. How do we future-proof it without blowing capital expenditure out of the water and hamstringing ourselves further down the track?
Okay, Katie.
Yeah, I have to agree with what Rachel and Brent have already said. I also sit on the Nature Calls steering group and have been quite closely involved. It's hard to think of how much more we could be doing. Since we had our consent lodged with Horizons, we then basically had to hit pause while we waited for wastewater treatment standards to be delivered. And when they were delivered, they didn't cover a hybrid option of discharge to land and discharge to the river, which is what our whole premise had been based on. So after waiting all that time for them, they didn't give us any of the guidance we were looking for. Those guy, the standards also won't permit us to do, to discharge to a higher standard than the standards permit. So if we want to do better, we are actually actively not allowed to. And the river discharge environment includes site-specific risk assessments, but don't look at cumulative effect on the rivers. So I'm actually really concerned about our ability to deliver good services in the future because of the prescriptive standards that have been handed to us.
I, that just feels crazy. Yeah. Vaughn?
Yes, I've also been sitting on the Nature Call steering group and of course, we get regular updates and it has gone for at least a decade now. And it started through the adverse effects to the aquatic life downstream from the purifiering growth, which is from the nitrate discharge. Our plant was designed to remove the phosphorus. We do that very well. And so all along, we've been looking at getting a better outcome for our nitrates discharge. And so when we first looked at this project, there's about 120 million, I think we had circled in our long-term planning to deal with this issue. And then over the time, it's gone up into the 600,000, 600, 600 to 700 million sort of bracket. And so we had to have a review of that even since we've lodged the consent. And so we've put a cap at 480 now and went through and reviewed all options and shortlisted a couple others, which have reviewed where the receiving environment will be. And most of those are back to the river. There's one option that goes to land. And so having that hybrid combination of the both, I think, is actually going to be the outcome. And so that'll be an investment treatment and the disposal being reviewed. So it's enormous amount of time, enormous amount of money already invested into this. So I think it's right up there as being the primary issue of council. Thank you.
Okay, let's get on to hard hitting question number two. Are you comfortable with the way the council manages its debt position? Let's kick off with Brent.
Thanks for the question. I am comfortable with it for a couple reasons. One is that debt fundamentally is a way of spreading cost intergenerationally and that tool has been used widely, wisely when we have long-term assets. My concern is that, looking into the future, it's going to become much, much harder to do that effectively, principally because another example of government overreach, trying to drive through a rates cap. What that means is that it takes away the opportunity for local communities to locally decide what the appropriate level of rating and what the appropriate level of debt is by putting a ceiling around the rate that is only going to drive debt further and further. And what you're going to end up seeing is probably councils that start to use debt to buy the groceries. That's starting to get into really dangerous territory and a great example of the perverse sort of outcomes that happen when you do have rates caps come in and the perverse sort of outcomes when you have central government overreach into what local communities should be deciding for their own best interests. It's fundamentally undemocratic to have a rates cap and I'm fully against it.
Okay, Kane.
When you look at the performance metrics of the debt levels, compare pretty favorably with the rest of the country. I think the scary thing when you're outside looking in is when you look at the pre-election report and some of the figures and the debt increases over the next couple of years, there's quite a marked jump in that. And I think that probably speaks to what Vaughn was talking about, the initial upfront capital projects the council's looking to do and whether there's a better way to phase those and spread that debt and make it easier for the rates to continue to stay on top and service it. So whilst they've done a great job now, you still have to continue to make good decisions around how you use that debt. Debt's a great facility, as Brent said, to spread that payment over time. But if we lump it all in one part, it's going to eat into options further down the track.
Okay, Mark.
Yeah, to be fair, I think we have got potential issues. We have said the auditors is looking at our long-term plan and saying it's not sustainable. I think everyone, you're right in what we say. You can't do anything without debt. But debt is an issue in itself and it's very reliant on low interest rates. If the interest rates take off, then we're in pretty big trouble. So, you know, I don't have a magic answer for it, but I think it's something that needs to be looked at carefully. And I think it's a whole understanding of way the councils work, way we work. Is there other options? Do we need to own everything? Can we create investment opportunities for people of the community that benefit the council but also benefit community and don't require a large outlay of capital, which you're forever paying on? So I think it's a topic that's a hard one. It's a reality that costs are going up and some things have to be done and central government don't help. But I think it's some more lateral thinking around how we can get around some of these things.
Vaughn?
Yeah, I've fully subscribed to the intergenerational investment, that we take the approach that things that we're investing in today will actually get benefit for the community for the next 50-year lifespan of the asset. So I think it's fair that the interest on that is shared. The debt equity ratios that we've got, I think, one thing that we've got to keep an eye on is currently around 250%, so 2.5 times, sorry, the amount that we have there. And here's where the risks lies that I have concerns about. One is the adverse effect to our long-term plan, saying that it's unsustainable and where's the rest of the money coming from third-party contributions? I think that is a big question, Mark. And I mentioned before that I think we have too much costs on the front end of our long-term planning. But when the water assets go into the new CCOs, that'll take quite a large asset off our box and that'll create a bit more headroom for councils. And the real risk is if we don't adjust the financial ratios from the debt equity, we'll start having a spending spree risk. I think we should be way more prudent because that's going to give us more space for the long-term planning and sustainability of our future. So I think it's, let me just cover that quite clearly. When the water assets come off, it's going to change our debt equity ratio and we need a review on that specifically. Thank you.
Vaughn? Oh, that was Vaughn, sorry. Katie, sorry, didn't highlight the right thing on the computer.
Yeah, I have been really uncomfortable with the idea of off-books debt, which is something that we have been considering in the past for financing some of our water infrastructure. Not comfortable with that at all. I do have a really high degree of confidence in the competence and capability of our finance staff. They've continued to impress me with what they've given us to make our decisions with and how they manage our finances. I am glad that we have a lower debt ceiling than is permitted under the LGFA. And I'm really, really pleased and was proud to vote for proactive debt repayment over and above what is required. I think that's been a really sensible approach to make sure that we maintain some headroom and keep ahead of the game. I also would reiterate what Vaughn said about the massive change that's coming to our books from the removal of our waters assets and our waters debt. We just don't know what that's going to look like at this point. So it's hard to answer how comfortable I'll be with it going forward.
Okay, Rachel.
Thank you. A lot of what, what I would have said has been said already and twice by Vaughn. So, one thing that Katie mentioned that I really did want to reiterate was that we have made a commitment to paying off more of our debt more quickly. That's in our long-term plan. So that speaks to council taking our debt position really seriously. I think there's a kind of a misconception out there in the community that we just keep, that we just keep adding to debt. And we do keep adding to debt, that's true. But we're also paying off debt at the same time. So when we choose to debt fund an asset, we fund it over the life of the asset or 30 years, whichever is shorter. And so as fast as we're starting new things, we're also retiring debt as well. And I'm very comfortable with the amount of transparency and information that we have about how that's working for our community. I support us using debt to fund intergenerational assets. There are a couple of, there are a few big projects on our books. Library and the museum are two of them. That's part of what drove the adverse audit opinion and that's part of why we need to look creatively at how we fund these kind of projects in future.
Okay, let's get ready for hard hitting question number three. What's your position on retaining Waite Pua, Maori ward for Palmerston City Council and Tonga Maori constituency for the Horizons Regional Council? And why do you hold that position? Let's kick off with Vaughn.
Thank you. I think that's an easy yes to retain them. I think ultimately, it's a choice. It's a choice for our residents to decide if they want to go on the Maori electorate role or not. And if they choose to, like many have, I think they should have candidates that elected by them and voted accordingly. And so that's a representation choice. I think where this whole thing becomes a hot topic, where Maori wards is the only ward out of the representation review. It's the only element of the representation review that's been put up in the referendum. And I actually think that's unfortunate. That's actually been creating a conflicting environment for people to have to justify their choice. And so I'm very clear, and I'll give you a real-life example. I've got four out of my five immediate family, my wife and three of my four children have chosen to go on the Maori electoral role and I'm very comfortable with that. And so that's again, summoning that back around again, there's a position of choice and I'm very supportive of it. Thank you.
Okay, Rachel.
Thank you, yeah, an easy yes from me as well. Agree that it's choice. I think it's, it gives effect to Tetera Tia Wai Tangi, but that's basically it for me. That representation and partnership is really important. It's been incredibly valuable in this term of council to have- to have strong Maori voices around the table, representing our whole community, but bringing that particular worldview to, to our table. And for me, it's as simple as recognizing our indigenous people and recognizing the promises that they were made under Titi Riauai. And for me, this is one, that's one way of giving effect to that.
Okay, Katie.
Thank you, yeah, I was really proud to lead out the notice of motion with our council to retain our Maori wards with the support of councillor Pet Hancock. And it's, that's a huge proportion of our, of our population that are disenfranchised essentially because they're not engaged and they don't see the point in engaging in council. One of the things we're always trying to do in council is lift civic engagement, help people to care and be invested and to feel that they are represented around the table. And they haven't been, Maori haven't been represented around the table in Palmerston North in the 150 years that we've had a council, very, very rarely. So the difference that it's made to have councillor Fitzgerald and deputy mayor Debbie Marshall-Lob at the table has been invaluable in the te kanga that they bring, the standards that they hold us to. But more importantly, who is it in aid of to remove them? Who is suffering so materially that it's imperative that they be removed? It's a net benefit to have them and no one loses. Kafahai tonu mato.
Mark.
Yeah, I totally agree with the others, I'm totally in favour of it. I actually think it's a real sad reflection of our central government that we're going back here. I think we've grown up more than that. We have responsibilities. Look, we have responsibilities and when you start to dig into it, we haven't fulfilled them. And this is an opportunity to at least do something. And I just think, wow, why would we even bother going back here? It's just crazy. Thank you.
Okay, Brent.
Like the other speakers, I strongly support the retention of the Maori ward, both at city council and at regional council, just to add a little bit more to some of the conversation that you've just heard. When we established those, we went through a consultative process with the community and heard from community around views. And there was support to bring those mechanisms in, those Maori wards. And the Maori ward councillors have both performed incredibly well. They have improved the dynamic around the table. They directly brought the perspective of indigenous voices into council decision-making. And they have been brilliant at representing Maori, but serving everyone. And it would be a strategic blunder of quite epic proportions if we as a city were to do away with that. We have significant strategic interests with Mano Fenua going forward and those need to be recognised and valued at a relationship level with our treaty partners.
Thank you for answering those questions. Yeah, you're right there, Mark? Yeah. Okay, go ahead, sorry.
For me, look, I have no issue with Maori wards being around and then happy for them to be here. I think Te Iko, the previous speakers, the binary nature and of the referendum is really harmful. It doesn't allow for a good conversation around what representation looks like. The council does really well in engaging with the local Iwi here, who also do a great job of engaging with the community and feeding back into the council and helping make great decisions for the city. I think we can proudly say as, as the city of Palmerston North, that we've avoided a lot of the conflict that's been up and down the country in some areas. And that's a reflection on the people that have taken on those positions and how thoughtfully they've engaged, engaged with them. I think unfortunately that whatever the result is going to be after this, I can't see it being the end of it. I think there's going to be, to continue to be blowout from this for unfortunately probably another two or three elections, which is a real shame.
Okay, let's get ready for closing statements. Kane, you get to go up first. One minute, why the Palmerston North voters should give you their first preference vote?
As you would have heard from me today, for me, I'm a, I'm a big advocate of how we set the city up and make good decisions to continue to foster the growth and the opportunities for the people of the city. As a, as a young person that's gone away and come back a couple of times, you realise how good Palmerston North is as a city to bring up the people, young people here and enable yourself to enjoy a great life. Those are deliberate decisions and deliberate actions and you need people that, that take the time to think through those deliberate decisions to make sure you get it right now and into the future because you need to set the next generation up to succeed as well.
Okay, Katie.
Well, we need principled nerds around the table and I definitely am that. Since I've been on council, I've built a bit of a reputation for obsessively doing my homework and for asking hard questions and not mucking around. And I have pushed for climate action plans, I have worked to cut red tape, I've called out dodgy process wherever I've seen it. And I focus on the things that make an impact on how people live in the city, what options they have available to them to live a good life here. And if I'm not reading council papers or asset management plans or policies, then I'm out in the community, I'm talking to school groups, coffee groups, organisations, residents and hearing what's on people's minds. And what I'm hearing from people is that they are increasingly worried. The costs are going up, the world is changing really fast in a really scary way. We've got change coming at us from all sides, we can't just react with business as usual. We have to have an agile plan and really strong foundations. So if you want someone practical and positive and committed to looking after what we've got, I'm your girl, Katie Zabellen.
Okay, Brent.
Thanks, perhaps a bit controversially, I'll ask for your second preference vote and encourage you to give your first preference vote to Katie Zabellen. Both of us are on the green team and very strongly endorse Katie's continued candidacy. And I guess what it means in terms of being Green Party members is that we're values-driven around people and planet, but view that through a local lens of what's best for Palmerston North. In terms of my forward commitments for the community, I'm really looking forward to continuing to be an active voice, an active councillor, listening and learning as I go and making decisions based on that principled view around people and planet. I'm here for a future-ready city, a future-focused city, one that's inclusive and one that's affordable for all of us. And I'll continue to keep that commitment in the term ahead. So vote Katie number one, Brent number two, thank you.
Vaughn.
Well, thank you for the chance to be engaged in this forum tonight. Here's what I'd love you to reflect on, is that when I first elected, I had four young kids, a young working family man for the community, heart for the community. Now, with all this time, I've got mukos growing up. My four kids are still here, live in the city and, you know, it means a lot to me having so many opportunities for family. And so you and your family, I'd want to make sure I've got a mind's eye to the needs of, for you guys. What people tell us very clearly over the years is people want business development, they want job creation and they want safety. They're the three things that come back regularly, I'm focused on those. Our economic strengths around distribution, education and defence, key focuses for me. And then with job creation, you know, with pathways through Meas Task Force for Jobs and giving opportunity for apprenticeships and all the like, for young people to come through on. So those are the issues I'm very focused to bring my experience. Please vote Vaughn Dennison, your number one choice.
Rachel.
Thank you. I think there are two parts to the job of being your elected representative. There's the turning up to meetings, usually on a Wednesday, having done your homework, have had some thinking time and being prepared to ask some tricky questions, listen to the views of others and make good decisions for our city. And then there's the bit where you have to actually get out and engage with the community to break down, you know, the algorithm, the bubble that we all live in. If people only talk to the people that they always talk to, then they'll only think what they've always thought. And we have to be prepared to engage with the debate in a rounded way. And you can trust me to do that. I attend hundreds of council and community events every year, no question, hand on heart. You can check my diary. You can trust me to turn up, to listen, you know, to talk to people, to make conversation and to hear what people are talking about and then to bring that back into the chamber and work hard on your behalf. Now, what I hear from people is that they want a community that's sustainable, that's equitable and that's compassionate. And you can trust me to help deliver that. Rachel Byrne, number one, thank you.
Okay, Mark.
Yeah, I think that the future is important and Palmerston North is a great place to live. Like Vaughn, I've got three of my four boys who've come back to Palmerston North to raise their families because of ease of living and a great place to be. I think that whether we like it or not, the reality is that we have issues in rates increases the last four or five years, way beyond wage increases, which is placing pressure on people. That is an issue and whether we like it or not, it has to be addressed in some format. And it can't just keep happening because real returns to people are decreasing, which is not a good thing. I think in regards to me, I think I offer the point of difference in regards to my property, experience and expertise. I think the city council has got some big property decisions to look at moving forward and I think I can add value considerably to those. So look, yeah, I think the caliber of people standing in this room has been great. And look, I'd love you to think you might vote Mark one and rest them two, three, four, five, six. But yeah, fantastic, thank you very much.
And just before we go, some general housekeeping on how STV works. When it comes to voting, please make sure you take a good look at the candidate standing and utilise ranking on your ballot paper. This race has 13 positions, which means it will come down to second and third and fourth press for its votes, it just won't be the number ones that will decide who gets elected. Now, in order to achieve election, a candidate must achieve 17.14% of the vote plus one of the, of the first preference in the redistributed votes. Any candidate who receives excess of the quota will have their percentage of their votes redistributed. Say the quota is 650 and the candidate receives 1,000 votes, 0.65 of those votes the candidate will keep and the 0.35 of their second preference votes will be redistributed and continue their way downwards towards candidates. When a redistribution comes from the bottom, which is when you've got no candidates and got eliminate last place, those are full votes that you redistribute and put on top. So please, when getting out there, make sure you get out and vote, take a look at it, try to attend other public meetings as well, you know, look at all sorts of resources. We heard it's valid and encourage everyone to get out there, be informed and get out and vote. Yeah. Okay.